Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee meeting of March 24, 2020. And at this time, I would take a motion for this hour meeting, and I will take a roll call vote after we have seconded.
Motion to open, Gordon. Second, Tim.
Second by Tim. The roll call vote, Ellen Pennington. Aye.
Woodman McKinnon, aye. Tim McGlaughlin, aye.
Mr. Hagan's, aye.
Rob?
Ruda, aye.
And because we're participating remotely, I'm sorry, I already told you, I'll take a roll call vote, and I would like to thank EB Camp for reporting our meeting. And also, so that we're not all speaking over each other, I will call each member's names. The percentage is all yours.
Okay. Are we going to do the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty, justice for all.
So I wanted to update everybody on coronavirus, which is obviously what we need to, what we're here to discuss a little bit this evening. First of all, welcome. This is our first online go-to meeting. I'm glad to see that everybody got in today, and we'll continue to do this so that the community sees that we are working and that we are here. And if the community, or our students, or our parents need anything, please call Central Office, or email your principals, or your teachers, guidance counselors, including our social workers, school psychologist. You can email Mrs. Anderson, Kristi Anderson, at the high school if you need something. Karen Clifford is available for all students and any students or parents who need to reach out. We know this is causing anxiousness. We know that this is a scary time, but we are here for you. If you are having problems getting online, or getting up, or emailing your teacher, or seeing the instruction which is available from teachers, what they are posting, you can certainly email Dr. Williams at EBPS, and she will make sure that you get the link to the instruction, or get the link to the teacher. If I could ask the committee, until you have a question, until we get through this for a second, could you mute your phones, please?
Okay. Trista has asked.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Teresa. Yes, Ellen?
I just, I was out for about 15 seconds, and I got booted out, and I just came back, so I missed a piece of what you were saying. But I'm gonna mute my phone right now, so I can still, you can keep going.
I was just saying that we are here for the community. If anyone has any questions, especially involving instruction, or getting online, if you email your principals, or Dr. Williams, Dr. Williams will put you in touch with who can help you and support you. Our IT department is here and working every day to make sure that we are continuing to have support, and we can manage the Internet and help you gain access to the curriculum and instruction that the teachers are putting out. First of all, I want to thank all the teachers, the staff members, the custodians, Deb Vaughn and the cafeteria crew that has come in each and every day to make meals. They have just been tremendous. The custodians have really worked very hard to keep our buildings clean and continue to do so. I'm gonna talk a little bit about that in a moment. We have a lot of things going on, which you may think that we don't, but we do. I do want to talk about the coronavirus and some of the essential services that we've been asked to put in place today at noon time by Governor Baker. I have a conference call at 3:00 PM today with the Commissioner of Education, and I will then relay the information that I received from Commissioner Riley. We are out of school per DSE until April 6, and we hope to reopen on April 7. We, at this time, are only having essential personnel come into our buildings from now until April 6, or until we are told otherwise by Governor Baker. The essential personnel are the superintendent of schools, Finance Director John Shea, Dr. Williams, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Barbara Polisi, John Phelan, Director of Special Education, Joanne Connors, the Assistant in Special Education. I have asked the principals to stay home. They will be working and accessing emails, telephone calls. We have rerouted many things to their homes, to their cellphones, until their devices that they will be using at home. The custodians will continue to work to make sure and maintain the buildings, that we have water, or if the heat goes down, continue to disinfect buildings, and to continue to maintain a clean environment in our food prep area. The custodians are going a two-on, two-off day, so that we do not have more than two to three custodians per building at one time, so that they are spread out throughout the buildings and the floors. I'm working with Brian Kylie on that, our facilities liaison between us and the town, and he's working with us very closely to make sure that everybody is kept safe and healthy throughout this time. But those are, that is the essential personnel. Do you have any questions on that? Anyone?
No. I don't.
Mrs. Benner, Mrs., thank you. Mrs. Benner will be at home throughout this time. She will be, she is right now online with us, and she is taking the notes, as she is the clerk for the school committee. But she also works for the finance department. However, we have worked her technology out, and she will be doing most of that work from her home, and will be doing a drop-off of mail to her home for her. So, at this point, that's really where we are at the coronavirus. I have no updates of any student, any faculty member, any staff member, any principal or administrator in the District of East Bridgewater at this time who has had or is being tested for coronavirus at this moment. If that changes, I will certainly let Mr. Spagon know from the Department of Health, and we will get that information out as soon as possible. At this time, though, I knock on wood that everyone is safe, and I hope that everyone's family is safe and extended families. Like to just talk a little bit about the coronavirus when it comes to federal and state grants. Per Department of Education, we have been told that all of our grants are in good standing. We have been told that the grants will continue to pay our employees, our teachers who work off of our grants, and who are supported through the grants. So at this time, our grants are in good standing, the state is in good standing with the grants, the grant providers are still providing the grant, and we are still being able to use them for that type of operation. When we asked about the school day requirement of how many days we should be in school during the coronavirus and the COVID-19 restrictions, we were told on March 10 that we would end school, and there would be no school after the date of June 30. We had no school cancellations, so we had five, we had four makeup days. At this time, our scheduled date, if we come in on April 7, will continue to be June 23. If, this is a big if, if we are to extend that time from April 6, or April 7 open to any time after that, the days will be added to the calendar, including movement of graduation at that time. I will continue to update on that, but that is where we are right now from the guidance from the Department of Education. As of right now, we are waiting, we will have some flexibility on testing for MCAS. We will have some relief on accountability for attendance, for our accountability standard. We're only counting the first 120 days this year, and those are for our accountability standards. AP exams at this time are looking at flexibility dates, so MCAS and AP exams will have flexible dates. And that's really the guidance that we have at this time, because things are moving so rapidly. They move day to day, hour by hour, minute by minute.
Can I, can I just quickly, does someone clarify? The original guidance was that if we had days after March 15, we didn't have to add them beyond Day 185, so you're saying that's strange now?
There's starting to be some movement, Tim, on that? As of right now, well, March 15, but March 10, on the announced that no schools are required to be in session after June 30, the longest day, so yes, the 185th day, scheduled day. So as, so, I guess I said it wrong. We had, if you, if the district had already canceled school for five days before March 15, it does not need to schedule additional makeup days for any of those days. If the school is closed after March 15, then you would add those days. But there is some movement right now, so right now, we're still getting out on June 23.
Okay. Even, even if we go out beyond April 7?
If we go out beyond April 7, there will be movement.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we're gonna have to make up some time somewhere in there. And right now, and then we will discuss, obviously, if beyond April 7, we'll talk about vacation, and we'll talk about April vacation, and what the Department of Ed will recommend, what our school committee will recommend, what the state will recommend. Lot of variables. I just want to update everybody on the trips to Costa Rica, Spain, Italy during April break, and the Washington DC trip on June 2020. Could we mute your mics, please? Just to let you know that we are working with our attorneys on, with Grand Classroom and EF Tours. We are doing this to support our families. The school committee approves the advisors and the students to go out of, out of state for a class trip. However, we do not contribute any financial support to the trip, and actually, it's individual parents who sign an agreement to travel. Travel with the company. I felt that if we worked together, and I wanted to support our families, and had our attorneys, Mr. Dominello, work with us, and work with Grand Classroom and EF Tours. We've had some great movement with Grand Classrooms. They're working with the school district, and our advisors, and our families, and I think that we're making some good movement. In regards to EF Tours, we are still in conversation with them, and we are still working. I would like to say, in all ways, that I don't back down from a fight, and I hope that all of my parents know that, that I would continue to fight and try to get as much of their deposit from these trips that we did not cancel, that were canceled by either the federal government, or our state government, or the companies themselves. We, as families, nor as the school district, canceled these trips. And that's why we had our attorneys and myself, and every other one of my colleagues in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are all pushing these companies to do the right thing and to reimburse. However, these companies have people that are working for them, just like we do, and I want to, they want to support their workers. So that's, the conversation is where we are now. I'll be talking to the advisors this afternoon. I do have a conference call with Mr. Dominello at 4:30, I believe, and we will be discussing both Grand Classroom and EF Tours, to see what the final decision is, and what we're listening, what we're hearing from both companies for our families. Grand Classroom has moved from a low percentage of money that our reimbursement that they were getting back, that now they are receiving a higher percentage, and I think that is because that we put some pressure on as a district, and we gave support using our attorneys. However, if any family feels that they would like to go it alone, or do it themselves, or, you know, they feel that they can do more than we can, I continue to say, go, please do so, but we're gonna continue to fight for each and every one of you and all of our families. And we're trying for 100%. I don't think it's right not to get 100%, however, the rules are changing every minute, and I would hate for any company to go bankrupt, and then we don't get anything, which I don't think will happen, and I hope that it doesn't happen. However, I would hate that to happen to us and our kids, and our families, and to be out that sort of financial, finances at this time. But we are working on it, and...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll go, I'll do a roll call and see if anyone has any questions. So Trista, I don't know if that was you starting to talk, but Trista, do you have any questions?
I do, I do. So Liz, I've been getting the email updates, because of course, I have, like, I have a boy on each trip. Is there, at what point will we know when this discussion is final, for all the parents out there who are kind of following this and waiting, as well as, you know, will there be a process for the refund once it's finalized, or will the parents have to individually contact the tour group? And then, do you also know anything about, I know I've seen some information regarding specifically the EF Tour, that the Attorney General, Maura Healey, is intending, or heads filed, or is filing a...
Class action.
A class action suit against EF Tours? So can you share anything in those regards?
Sure. If you, I've been, all communications that I have received from Nick Dominello, our attorney, that he has had with either Grand Classroom or EF Tours, and we got one from EF Tours today, but I'm gonna go over it with Nick prior to sending it out, is...
Okay.
Is exactly where you're at, especially with the Grand Classroom, the Costa Rica trip and the DC trip. So those numbers, those, I think it's 80 and 85%, those are where we're at. I believe, from what my understanding is, is that once, if that deal is approved by all of our parents and all of you, that Nick would then say the East Bridgewater parents and students would like the 85% reimbursement, and so it would be 85% of whatever your deposit was at that time. Because I guess there was one last payment, I think it was due this Saturday for one of the trips, so we told parents not to pay it. So if you didn't pay that, you'll get 85% of whatever you put towards the trip so far. And on the other trip, it was 80% of the deposit that you had put in. For the opinion, on the EF Tours, there is going to be a class action lawsuit from Maura Healey. We can certainly wait on that, if that's what the group wants to do. The opinion, which is always guidance and an opinion from our attorneys, was, will be part of a class action lawsuit. That doesn't mean that everybody gets 100% back. Things happen during a class action lawsuit, and the fees for attorneys, the fees for all the little things that go along with a class action lawsuit, and then what your share of that would be is undetermined at this time. So from the opinion from our legal, would be, if we can get this deal done, I'd get the deal done. My concern is, Trista, is that there will be some of our parents that will be out of work and not getting a paycheck, and I would rather have recouped some of the money, if not all the money, as some sooner than later, and if I can get that back to them by next Friday, that'd be the greatest thing we could do for you. But I understand where parents are, and if parents feel that they want to try it and do it themselves, I certainly appreciate that. We were just here to help, and we thought that if we would jump on with other districts and other schools and other school trips, we might be able to get something done. But that's the best that we have, and we're gonna, I have that conference call at, I think, 3:30 today, 4:30, I mean, with Nick, and then right after that, we will send out our opinion, and then I'm gonna ask all the advisors to ask what people want, and then send it back, and then we'll go from there for tomorrow.
Okay. And Liz, I think...
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Trista.
I, it's important, when that communication goes out, because I don't know, based on the emails I've been reading, that parents, that they realize exactly what you explained, that, you know, if they do decide to pursue the class action suit, they're very likely going to end up with less than whatever the settled amount from EF Tours would be.
Right.
Because there will be attorney fees and other things. And I don't think there's that understanding, based on all the emails that I've read, so I think that would be a point worth mentioning.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't mention that the other day, because we thought we were going, we believed that people wanted to get their money back, and we thought the best way to do it was just try to get the money and try to get some restitution for this trip. When Mr. Dominello and I spoke about class action, he described to me, excuse me, and discussed with me what happens in a class action lawsuit, and we'll certainly go over that later on today. But yes, I will put that in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Just quickly, Gordon, do you have any questions?
No, not on that, thank you.
Tim, any questions?
Nope.
Rob, any questions?
No, I'm good.
Teresa, any questions?
I'm good.
Okay, good. Okay, and I don't have any. Go ahead, Liz.
All right, student medications on the agenda. Amy Behrendt, our head nurse, came in last Friday, went around to all the schools, and took out all the medications that parents had called in and requested through the nurse or the building principal. We brought them in on Friday. Mrs. Behrendt had each parent come in and receive the medications. So at this point, I have not received any more calls or emails, and I have not heard from Mrs. Behrendt that no medications have been, have been not picked up. However, if you still, or any of our parents still have medications that have not been picked up, the nurses have called all the parents that had medications, but again, things are moving rapidly. If we missed somebody, please email the building principal, or myself, or Dr. Williams, to say that you need to pick up medication, and we will do so as soon, as soon as we can. We'll have Amy, Mrs. Behrendt, come up as the head nurse. She's in the central personnel during this time, that we keep her on call-in basis only. If a student doesn't have the medication, she will come in. Any questions on that?
Any questions, anyone? Gordon, quickly?
Uh, nope, good, thank you.
Trista?
No.
Tim?
No.
Rob?
No, thank you.
Teresa?
Nope.
None here, go ahead, Liz.
Operation Brown Bag, we have moved it from the lobby of the junior senior high school front door lobby to the back bus drop-off and pickup lane on the Route 18 side of the junior senior high school. It is now going to be given out between 10 and 12 daily, because we're going to start providing a hot breakfast. So, we'd like to do it earlier, but we figured we'd get a little bit, best of both worlds. We're gonna try to provide as many hot breakfasts as possible, and we're going to be also serving one to two days a week, a hot lunch. I also want to make note that Viking Pizza has reached out to us, and once again, would like to support the East Bridgewater Vikings, and help us do a pizza once a week, and we'll try to do the best that we can with that, continuing to make it warm, from the delivery at 9:30 to packing it up for the 10 o'clock pickup. A reminder on Operation Brown Bag, for lunches and breakfast, every student, regardless of free or reduced lunch, or regardless of, if you do not receive free and reduced lunch, every student in the District of East Bridgewater can be and will be provided a lunch for free every day between 10 and 12 pickup. Do not not come and pick up a lunch if you can. We do drop a few lunches off for those parents who cannot come to the school to pick up. If we find that we are overwhelmed with the number of students and parents who want to come and pick up a lunch, we will then move to a location, we'll have two locations, one here at the junior senior high school cafeteria entrance, out back in the bus and driver plane, and we will then have our box truck located somewhere in East Bridgewater for pickup. And that is only if we get to a point with lunch delivery, or providing a lunch and breakfast daily, that we can't handle in a sufficient amount of time here at the junior senior high school. We certainly don't want a line of people, and I do not want people to come in harm's way. We want it to be efficient, safe, and healthy. If it begins to get where people are standing in line, or closer than six feet, and I can't control the lines and making sure that people are just getting out one at a time out of their cars, we will move to a location somewhere in East Bridgewater from our box truck for pickup. I want to thank the East Bridgewater Police Department, especially our school resource officer, Talitha Connors, has been delivering our lunches on a daily basis for those who cannot make it to the pickup area. I've also been told that we have, the Department of Public Works would certainly help with some of their vehicles if we need to move to some locations. I think we're in good shape right now, but I want to thank Talitha, and I believe Cecilia Cacciatore, Officer Cacciatore, picked up today for us and dropped off the lunches. But we're doing a hot breakfast and a lunch. Thank Viking Pizza, thank Deb Vaughn and her crew, Sheila and Kim Purcell have been doing a tremendous job making lunches. We're prepared every day, the juices and the fruits and the chips are ready to go, and the dessert, every day before, when they come in, that's when they make the hot meal. So they are not sandwiches made from the night before, it's not a hot dog that's going in a microwave, it's, they're preparing in the morning. So, that's where we are on the lunches.
Thank you, Liz.
Any questions?
Any questions, Gordon?
None for me.
Trista?
No.
Tim?
No.
Rob?
Quick one. Liz, can you tell us a little bit about how many meals we're serving per day? I'm not sure if you mentioned a number, I missed it.
Our first day, it was, we started with four meals. We're up to 100-plus at this time. We're up to a hundred plus at this time. We also, we also just-
Uh, Teresa, oh, sorry.
No. Just before Teresa gets on, uh, because this will probably be one of Teresa's, she's good at this one. Um, the reimbursement, we will get full reimbursement of the lunches that we serve. We do not have to keep track of names or ID numbers. It is just, we know that there are students because they know where they're coming. But, um, it, I will say this, uh, the FDA and, um, our SNAP programs and, and those programs that are by the Department of Education federally and, and state, um, have, will a hundred percent reimburse all of the lunches that we serve throughout this time.
Teresa? I'm good. Thank you, thank you everyone for all the hard work with the Brown, Operation Brown Bag. Go ahead, Liz.
Uh, hourly employees, I want to just let, thank, uh, again, the school committee. Uh, we will continue to pay teachers. They are contracted employees. But I, we will continue to pay our teachers because of your vote, our ISAs because of your vote, our custodians because of your vote, our long-term substitutes that do our maternity leaves or, um, an FMLA leave because of your vote, our secretarial bargaining, uh, unit because of your vote, the administration team because of your vote. So I'd like to thank each and every one of you for taking that vote. It was the right thing to do. I continue to say it's the right thing to do. We are, we are, John and I, uh, have been on, um, several conference calls. Uh, Dr. Williams, um, is on several conference calls, uh, with, uh, with us as well, whether we're talking about, uh, the instructional piece of the online learning, um, in the Commonwealth, or we're talking about the financial piece. Um, as I said to my teachers and staff yesterday in a, uh, in a correspondence that I sent home, was there's a lot of moving parts to school districts. Uh, we do have transportation, we have food, uh, we have a lot of people who work for us. Um, we have special education needs. Um, right now, all of those areas are being funded. Um, transportation, uh, we are looking for guidance. Um, and there is a conference call, we had a conference call on Friday. We'll have a conference call this week with Jay Sullivan from the Department of Education. John is working with all the business administrators in the state. Uh, we'll continue to work with Lucini. Uh, this was not bus drivers' fault, this was not Lucini's fault. This was, you know, this is a virus that has affected everybody from, you know, uh, from all over the world. And, uh, we're doing the best that we can to keep up. And we're doing the best that we can to continue to fulfill, um, our contractual obligations and our, and our contracted obligations, um, throughout the warrants. So I just wanted to thank you for supporting us. And any guidelines, um, that I receive from the Department of Education or John receives from the Department of Education through the business and finances, we will certainly send to you as soon as possible.
Thank you, Liz. Uh, does anyone have any questions, any additional questions for Liz, or no? Uh, Gordon?
I'm here. Are we, uh, there's still one more topic, the education of students?
Yes.
Is that still coming?
Um, yep. If anybody has any que, any questions on, uh, the payments of anything.
Yeah, Gordon, I'm from Gordon.
Trista?
Sorry, no, I was on mute.
That's okay, Tim?
One for now, thank you.
Rob?
No.
Teresa?
Nope.
Uh, go ahead, Liz.
And so, uh, let's just talk about the education for teach, uh, for students. First of all, teachers are doing great. Want to thank Dr. Williams, uh, and her crew, Erin Fisher, uh, Jen McPartland, uh, Karen Clifford, and the principals, um, working together on the website, our links to get, uh, to, to get around on the website, to find out, um, educational venues for students to, uh, go on to, to get help, to support, to get some materials to support their learning. Right now is a time for enrichment. Um, it's not time for assessing. It's more of a time to continue to hone in on the skill developments that we have learned and the continued development of what we're doing in classrooms or what we were doing the day that we left. I, I, along with many of my colleagues, all of the colleagues and, and the principals, and Tim can attest to this, we are looking for more guidance so that we are all on the same page because there are schools in Western Mass who do not have internet capacity. There are schools, probably, uh, not just schools, but houses. There will be homes in the Commonwealth that two parents have been told to work from home and they have to use one computer. Well, how can we tell a child to be on and to do online learning if there's only one computer and the father is a salesman and the mother is a record keeper, uh, for a company? Very difficult, but I think that our teachers have risen to the occasion. Our staff is doing professional development, um, online. Um, and all over the Commonwealth, there's such and so many great things going on. All teachers are supporting their kids, whether it's physical education, whether it's music online, whether it is languages, um, whether it is health and wellness, whether it is civics, third grade math, uh, kindergarten. Their teachers and principals are doing a tremendous job of engagement of each other as professionals and engagement of their students. And I want to thank each and every one of the principals and the, and the students, uh, or the teachers. The students, um, in East Bridgewater, so far, so good. We've handed out, anyone who needed a Chromebook has called their principal or emailed and we have made, um, we have made accommodations for them to pick up the Chromebook. Uh, the IT department, uh, under John Shea's direction, bought thirty, uh, more hotspots so that if a student didn't have internet in their home, we are now able to get them internet in their home so that they can participate in online learning. We also sent out packets, um, for children who do not have capacity to online learning. Even if we gave them a Chromebook, they might not be able to use that Chromebook. So the principals and teachers provided packets for those children. In regards to those on an IEP, uh, Jay Fallon and his, uh, department are working, um, around the clock to make sure that we're providing engagement opportunities for all students, giving inclusionary options for all students. Include, uh, making sure that, um, the teachers of students with IEPs are connecting with their students. This is not a time, uh, to grade and, and to, um, put a letter or a number next to a paper or to assess. It's time to make sure that kids are engaged and that we're providing enrichment and support to their learning. Uh, because this is difficult. It's difficult to know who's online, what, what's going on online, uh, how are we, um, interacting with each other. I can tell you today, we had a parade, the teachers thought of this. I just helped out by getting ahold of the school resource officer and the chief of police, um, and asking if we could do a parade route so the kids could see their teachers. It was heartwarming and sad, all in the same, um, breath. To watch children see their teachers and cry and to scream their names and to wave and to jump up and down and to see high school students, yes, I saw you high school students in cars with your parents, um, and even some standing on the side of the road or sitting in the back of a truck someplace. You miss your teachers and that's okay. And we miss you. And we're trying to navigate these uncharted waters just like you are. And Dr. Williams, um, on a daily basis is connecting with the principals and the facilitators, um, in IT to make sure we are up and working and functioning as a group. Because, again, I have said this time and time again, where this is event-driven and we're gonna get through it, but it takes a village to raise a child. And this village is come together, has united, we're standing together and we're gonna get through this. Um, because kindergartners, I saw them out there today and I saw preschool and watched Mrs. Gorham's kids from pre-K, um, try to get away from their parents to run to her car. And when you, when you see something like that, it takes your breath away to know how important our teachers are from three years old to, and I did see you, some, many of you, seventeen and eighteen-year-old high school seniors. This is an important time to stay focused. And yes, you've got to stay at a distance, but we can still learn and, and engage. So the support is there, your teachers are there, your school district's there. And I think that they're doing a terrific job, um, on supporting the education. We are not holding, um, kindergartners back. So when we begin next year, there's gonna be some, uh, I mean, when we begin on April seventh, when we come back, um, or if we get pushed back, these kindergartners, um, and these three-year-olds, there's gonna be some time that we're gonna have to reunite and reengage and remember. And with even our seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, we're gonna have to do the same. So, um, that's where we are with the education for students. Any questions?
Uh, I'd like to start out by saying, thank you for all you've been doing, you and the superintendent and anyone else who's been involved with working on whatever we're doing with the education for our students. And also, thank you for the parade today. Thank you to the teachers and for everything that everybody did to make the parade happen. I don't know if you heard me in the beginning because my phone cut out at the beginning of the meeting. I really appreciate, and I'm sure a lot of other people in this town really appreciate, that the parade happened today. It was so unbelievably uplifting to see the teachers going down the street waving and smiling and watching the kids. And it was just really uplifting and I can't tell you how much it meant to me and all the other kids. And, um, so at this point, I would say, Gordon, do you have anything that you'd like to say or ask?
Uh, certainly start and end with a thank you for Liz and Gina and everyone involved in keeping this moving under such bizarre circumstances. The question that I have is, um, from a student's point of view, Liz, um, whether they be in third grade or tenth grade or whatever, what are they seeing? Are they getting assignments from their teachers, uh, and homework? What, what, what does it actually look like on their end?
Um, some students, I, I'll give you an example. Uh, some students, uh, had to do some makeup work. So teachers are allowing them to make up work or assessments that they missed in the past, um, to reinforce some of the skill work that they were doing. Um, we're trying to reinforce material and skills that has already been learned, learnt, uh, along the way. Um, trying to teach new right now is difficult without having a, um, a person-to-person or in-classroom conversation. Although some teachers are moving, I think that right now, um, teachers are moving to, uh, where they go to the Google Classroom, um, or the Zoom platform classroom where they can see the class. So the class can see the teacher. Um, and they're starting to, to do that and we'll see how that, um, how that envelope opens. Um, from a student perspective, um, I'd actually like to, to send out, um, a survey next week. I'll be talking to Dr. Williams about that tomorrow. We've talked about it, but we haven't put it together yet. That we'd like to know how the students feel, what they would like to see happen while we're not in school together. Um, and hear from the students' perspective, especially, um, in the older grades and what more, or if it's too much, how do we pull back? If it's not enough, how do we add to it? Um, the younger grades, the teachers are reaching out, um, daily. Um, and they are, they have many platforms to, um, get involved with, with online. Most of the K through six teachers have students' numbers. They all have their, um, their Chromebooks. Most students, if not all students at this time, have their Chromebooks. We even, um, gave out Chromebooks to kindergarten and first grade, so, and second grade. So we're, uh, to answer that question, you know, I think I'll have a better answer in a week from now or a couple of weeks from now because this is really our first week. Last week, we were working at it. Um, we were up and going on last Wednesday. By Friday, I felt that we had started to walk, we were crawling. Um, we were sitting on, on Wednesday, crawling on Thursday, walking on Friday. We're just starting to skip today and we'll start running by tomorrow, I think. But it's getting a little easier. Uploading materials is, is challenging for some and for students. Like if they take a picture of it, uh, take a picture of their work and send it in, we're going to accept it. Um, if you can upload it to the Google spreadsheet, uh, to the, um, to the platforms, we'll accept it. Um, so those are, those are ways that we are, uh, working with students, Gordon.
Um, thank you, uh, Liz. I guess, uh, just a more basic question. Are there, are the children online during times when they would normally be in school and for specific classes, classrooms?
Some are, yes.
Can they do their work anytime throughout the week?
Um, right now, uh, they are starting to, um, if you, it depends on the teacher. If, if it's third grade, the third grade teacher may say, you know, today from nine to ten, we're going to do this. And then you'll be working on this throughout and, uh, you can talk to the teacher via being online. At the high school level, um, they are working on whether we put it into a schedule or how will they work. But the kids are, um, uh, the kids are looking, um, online so they know what they have to do. And if the teacher is going to hold a classroom chat or a classroom where you can see that, uh, teacher, then the student, um, is scheduling their time around that. To say that, to say that we have all of the schedules, um, where a student gets up at, you know, nine o'clock and they get right online, um, I would hope that that's the case. But right now, it's, um, it's more of, uh, on the platforms. The students do it when they can't, or when, you know, when they wake up and they start most. We've sent out schedules of what a schedule looks like. We're gonna be sending more of those out, like what's a third grade day look like? What does a child in kindergarten look like? Mrs. Gorham gave out a schedule, um, I believe it was Mrs. Gorham gave out a schedule. What does a pre-K classroom look like? What does a full-day pre-K class look like? You know, we're here at nine, you know, we sit and read at, you know, for half an hour from nine to nine-thirty, then we work on social skills, then we work on this skill, then we work on our speech. So, um, as of right now, it's a little bit loose, Gordon, but I do know that we are working on, I know that the principals are working with the teachers, um, on how they schedule and what, and how they do, how they go throughout the day for the, for the student. You know, I would hope that students, um, would try to get between three to three and a half, maybe four hours a day of, of working on assignments and, and academics, whether it's reading or journaling. Yep?
Gordon, it's Teresa. I don't know if this helps you at all, but my experience as a parent has been, um, first and foremost, a lot of engagement from the teachers with just checking in with these kids, which I think has been phenomenal and really helpful. Um, some teachers are using, um, you know, video references to teach. Um, all of them using the Google Classroom platform, um, and, and various assignments. I, I know Veronica, she's from the get-go to the postboard with the schedule to tend to do at school time. And then, you know, if I need more time from that side, and she's pretty engaged with it. Um, and not that she would be mad, so unfortunately this is probably gonna air, but, you know, she's actually enjoyed the routine of, of still having, you know, schoolwork at times. Um, but I think more importantly, what I've seen is, is more of the kind of the emotional, social check-in and kind of engagement from the teaching team. It has been enormously helpful, just that, hey, we, we miss you, we're thinking about you, like the parade today. And it's that, and, and Liz- And it's that, and Liz, I could, I could hear you choking up even during the parade day a little bit. It was definitely a happy and sad flood of emotions all at the same time. But I, I think, in talking to different parents and stuff, I think most kids have actually kind of embraced, you know, school to kind of get some sense of normality throughout all of this. And so I, I think it, you know, it's working fairly well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm sorry to take up so much of this time, but Liz, any concerns about graduating students? You know, graduating seniors?
At this time, no. I think that any student that was, I don't think we had too many, but if there's any student at risk, I can tell you that Principal Sylvia and his, and his guidance and teachers and Assistant Principal and Kristi Anderson, Karen Clifford, they've reached out to those parents and to those teachers of those students and really working on making sure we get them to the, get them to the, get them to the finish line at this time. But no, I don't, I don't see that. And the guidance right now is, you know, our role right now, and thank you, Teresa, for that, is really to keep kids engaged, to make sure that, you know, we're not going to let them down. They don't want to let us down. We can see that out there and we're certainly not going to let down and we're going to continue to do the best that we can.
Tim, do you, Tim, do you have anything?
No questions. I just wanted to say, Liz, I echo your sentiment that, you know, I think the teachers are really gone above and beyond. I can tell you, you know, from our house, you know, having two split kids and a really young one, that everyone's getting a little punchier up here now and, you know, temper's a little short. We've had a lot of, a lot of close times, but I think my, my fifth grader having, being able to video chat a music lesson with Mrs. Landers last week was easily the highlight of his week. And I think he's, it's really enjoying that connection with his teachers and it's been really hard on the families. It's been really hard on our family. I can't imagine, you know, everybody else is feeling the same way. So it's really nice to see that outreach.
It's great.
Rob? Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, it really, it's just I have the, very much the same experience where, you know, for my fourth grader and my pre-K, regular engagement with the teachers, we've enjoyed online band lessons with Mrs. Landers as well. My daughter was one of those kids who almost jumped into Mrs. Gorm's car today. So connection is still alive and well and I just really applaud everybody who's keeping it going. So thank you.
Yes, and I have that same experience with all three of my kids.
Can I just make one comment, please?
Sure, go ahead, Teresa. Um, can I, can I just, oh, sorry, Teresa, I thought you said Teresa, sorry, go. No, go ahead, Teresa.
No, thank you. Liz, everything you've shared with us about how all the teachers are approaching, you know, enrichment during this time, you know, and some of the constraints on, on the ability to truly teach and further education because of all of the different challenges, if anything, because we're in such an unprecedented place. I personally think if there's any way for more of a definitive message to maybe be sent from the principals of the schools, especially at the high school level, I mean, there's so, so much uncertainty and unsettledness right now and of course, everyone, you know, everyone is thinking their own thoughts as far as how this is going to play out, you know, up until April 7th and thereafter. But I think it's really important that parents realize that they can't be comparing with each other based on what teachers, their students have and what grade and what teacher is giving this and how come my teacher hasn't given my kid any assignments because I've seen that. You know, not all teachers are, have necessarily gotten to the point of giving assignments or consistently giving assignments because it's, again, we're all in this, this daze of a place. But I also think it's really important that parents at all age levels realize that every parent wants and every student wants to, you know, make sure this school year doesn't create some big deficit in learning. The fact of the matter is, is every single student is in the same boat, at the same grade level with their peers, et cetera. And I really think what's most important is to keep your kids engaged, but also really focus on their emotional well-being and don't get so, so focused on the academic piece that, that if you as a parent feel it's not being implemented or it's not consistent across, you know, different teachers or subject matters, it's okay. I think everybody needs to step back and say, it's okay.
Yeah.
That's just my thought.
Right. And I, you know, I sent that message out on EB Cam last night. If you haven't, saw it up on the public access channel, you can go and certainly watch my message and I think that that was pretty much my message, is we're trying to engage the best that we can. We really don't want you to fall asleep on us and we don't want to fall asleep on you and meaning that I don't want anybody to get anxious and, or have anxiety. We want to work with everybody. The principals, once, once I am on this Desi telephone call today and with a conference call from the commissioner, I think we'll have a little bit more guidance as we move forward and they'll, they'll start to reach out and I think you'll see a little bit more from the principals tomorrow. On Friday, I will, I will, I'm going to be, start addressing on Mondays from the EB Cam or the public access station, so that goes out to everybody in the community and our chi, and our kids and, but I also, on Fridays, I will be sending a notification from my office. I wanted to assess this week and what this week looked like and hear from Dr. Williams, her thoughts by Friday so that we could put a letter together to our families to see where we're at. The principals will reach out by Friday as well, but on Friday, you'll get a communication from myself and Dr. Williams.
Thank you. At this time, if no one has anything else?
Can I just, can I just say, can I just say something, Ellen and Teresa?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Liz, the only thing I would ask, if we can do in some size, shape or form, EB Cam or whatever, is at least try to reassure our seniors, and certainly we can't guarantee anything at this point in the game, but that we will try our very best to let them enjoy some of the milestone moments that are so typical in a senior year that they're kind of missing out on. I know D R has already canceled their prom and some of our seniors are really concerned about that. And, you know, the reality is, that may happen, it may not happen in May or whenever it happens, but, you know, maybe we could still do something in August or whatever this nightmare ends.
Sure. I think principals-
I know it's something you can commit to now, but it's something, if you, if you could think on it, because I've had some that I know and, and credit to our seniors, some of them are working their tails off covering groceries just at this point because I've seen them. And I know, we don't know the answers. Unfortunately, nobody knows the answers of the times we live in, but even if we can, you know, reassure them that we're, we're, you know, everybody, and I know everybody is doing their best to, you know, protect those, those moments for them, you know, through this whole thing, I've always said, you know, the kindergartners and the seniors, the two most important years in, in, you know, in your academic world and they've kind of been touched on.
Yep. And we know that. And so we, we're, that's why we're postponing things at this time, but we are, the principals are cognizant of that and they're, and they are really looking for that. They're, they're, they're just postponing at this time.
Ellen, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is Gordon. I have to jump off. I have to get onto a call at 3:00. I apologize. I know we haven't voted on things, but I appreciate having the opportunity to have this meeting, so thank you.
Dave, Dave, go ahead. Thank you, thank you, Gordon.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
At this time, I would take a motion to approve accounts payable warrant 39 S V dated March 25th of 2020, and I would take a move, move by Teresa.
Second.
Second. Second by, second by Tim and I take a roll call vote, so that would be Ellen Pennington, aye. All aye. Oh, sorry, what's going on? So Ellen Pennington, aye, and then Trista?
Yep. Aye.
Gordon? I mean, Rob?
Aye.
I think you guys have to say your names, though.
Ruda, aye.
Trista?
Higgins, aye.
Teresa?
Malts, aye.
Uh, Tim?
Law, aye.
It's unanimous. And at this time, I would take a motion to approve-
Ellen, excuse me. Ellen, I'm going to leave the table. John Shea's going to finish any, if there's anything. I need to get on the, the conference call with the Commissioner of Education. I, I'll be back.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Good luck, Liz.
Thank you. Stay healthy.
Hi, Liz, thank you.
At this time, I would take a motion to approve payroll warrant 38 P S dated March 18th of 2020, and I'll do a roll call vote and Pennington, aye. Trista?
Higgins, aye. Higgins, aye.
Uh, Rob?
Ruda, aye.
Tim?
Law, aye.
Teresa?
Malts, aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. And we're at the end of our meeting. I have one question, so maybe John Shea can answer this question and maybe not, it might have to be left to another time. So during the time that we are out of school, will there be any, will it be necessary for any of us to come in and sign any of the warrants so that they can get paid?
I don't know. I know, I know there's a lot of, in my business group, there's a lot of talk about the correct way to do it and, and the acceptable way to do it. So I, I do have a meeting with the attorney, attorneys today at 3:30, so I can, I can follow up with them and send out some guidance.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. And then you'll just let us know?
I will let you know, yes.
You'll, you'll just, okay, thank you. And at this time, I would take, I would wish everyone to stay healthy and safe and I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting. Move by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Tim. All in favor, roll call vote. Pennington, aye. Trista? Trista? Did we lose Trista?
I lost Trista. Malts, aye.
Tim? Malts, aye. And Rob?
Ruda, aye.
Tim?
Law, aye.
Okay, well, we have a quorum and we adjourn this meeting.